Good morning, it is nine AM and I'll call to order the Board of Directors' Special Meeting Workshop for Wednesday, March sixth, two thousand twenty-four. May I have a roll call, please?
Director Meyer-Muffin.
Here.
Director Duff.
Present.
Director Martin.
Here.
Vice President Griffith.
Present.
And President Sewell.
Here.
Thank you, we have corn.
And seeing that all five directors are present, we'll skip item three. Item four, public input, this is the opportunity for members of the public to address the board on matters within the board's jurisdiction. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. State law prohibits the board from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the agenda. Do we have any members of the public wishing to address the board?
Um, I don't know yet, Donna, are you here to observe this morning's meeting, or do you care to make public comment?
I am part of Kenwood Energy with Tim Holmes.
Thank you so much, welcome.
No problem.
President Sewell, there are no members of the public online.
Thank you. Items for discussion, item five, Engineering Department Update. General Manager.
Thank you, President Sewell, I'm gonna hand out some things here. This being a relatively new activity, we did, we would like to present what we have for a limited amount of projects and we can then refine that, what we present and go, and then talk about how to do it for the next time, but I think we need one more. So what you have in front of you right now is the contracts amount for, as I said, a selected amount of projects, you have the admin building, conveyance line, uh, emergency generators for backup, M-two, we have the recycled water facility, and then behind it is just graphs, so you can visually see what it is being contracted out at the bottom, and then just color differentiation, if you have something that is orange, it's how much we spent to date, and then gray is what we have left over. So as you can see going through most of these projects, except for the emergency generator backup for wells, uh, we have leftover costs, the reason that the emergency generators were backup is because it is a design project and we have not gone to construction. So, um, Arturo can, is bringing up some more detail, breaking it down by contractors. So I didn't know exactly how far you wanted to get down into, uh, the projects themselves, but of what we have in front of you, it's a basically a start to start having the conversation of how you would like to see this presented.
First question. Administrative building is that? We've had this discussion about the semantics in the past.
That administrative building, two point two four is the renewal Clark contract.
Okay.
And that is how much we spent to date amount remaining.
Okay.
And that designed services, so that is a, that's the CSC.
Okay. And these conveyance lines are attached to what project, any particular?
Yes, the conveyance line is the conveyance line that's going to be going from Dos Palmas to the regional plant. It's the one going down Dillon, Sewell, Force Main, you'll see two different line items there, you'll see.
One's design, one's construction.
Exactly.
Could we possibly get everything under, uh, so, I mean, like, here you have regional water reclamation facility, right?
Correct.
And then you have the stuff over here, and then you have these two here, I, I think it would be easier if we're talking about one project to have everything under the one project, rather than two lines up here, and then we've got more down here separated by other stuff in between.
So the regional facility itself is, does have its own line item, but I see what you're saying, and this is something that.
I think if it's related, I would like to see it.
Okay, so.
Adjacent.
And this is, this is one of the things that we're, we're working with TKE and our, uh, finance department to do, to make sure that we break these apart. When you look at some of the items that you've seen in the past, you've seen the big sixty-eight million dollar number, that's the way we brought it to you from the funding package, because they combined all three projects into one. However, we have separated in the separate projects, if you'd like to consider those as one large project, we can continue to do that, but at least from a summary perspective.
I don't, I don't mind, I, I like that they're broken out, but because they're attached to this project here, it makes more sense to me to have them under that project, so that we, we're not like, well, what is this, where is this going, so, um, because you know that. And most of us probably know that, but if anybody else is looking at it, they're gonna be like, I don't understand it, so.
Okay, so we can break it down separately and, and we'll call it what we've called it in the past, which is the groundwater quality protection program, and this is the.
Because this total here should be part of the RWRF total, wouldn't it, would it not?
No, they are separate projects, they were built separately, uh, when you think about the, the construction project, it's about down a construction, and you think of the regional plan, it's done by Che. So it's two separate contracts, uh, and then even though we got it one funding agreement, there's three parts of that funding agreement. It's the, uh, the FBA, there's three of them, there's one for the regional plant, there's one for the conveyance line, and then there's one for M-two. So they are, even the state looks at them and will be reimbursing us as three extra. Uh, that was one of the things that we're working with TKE right now is to make sure that they are, when they're doing the, the construction maintenance, or excuse me, the construction and, uh, management of that project, they have one contract with us, but they have to be breaking it down into three projects, so we can properly get the dispersments to the state, so.
So I quickly change them in the, uh, spreadsheet right now.
Perfect.
But obviously, we need to do a, a better tie-in, um, to do subtotals for the entire project, so we.
Yeah, if it's three separate. Yeah, just, but it's on the same project. Then, I think it should be.
CRS.
So it reflects that, and it's easier to find.
Okay, and that, that's fine, because if you look at our budget, we do it, we break it down as three separate projects in the budget too. Um, so no, that, that's good input, very good input.
I think this is the information I asked you to put together, and I appreciate it, and Director Duff.
For sure, so we, so as you can see in the spreadsheet, if we go to the chart sheet, just so you, we didn't. So this is actually each contract, so each one of these line items are broke down into a similar fashion here, where it's actually more specific. I didn't know if you were visual, or if you wanted to see a table, so I did.
Kinesthetic personally.
It's a good, it's a good mix.
Okay.
And real quick, um, should the charts, should those be separate columns? Because right now I look and I see the, you know, the axis on the side, it almost looks like administration building, we're at four point five million, but really it's that blue section.
Exactly, and that, that was, we were trying to convey what the total was, and then add the other two, but you're right, I, we.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's additive, not, it's additive, it's not the other way around, so yes, we can break those apart as well.
Okay.
So, that was something we were looking at, and that's well spoken, it made sense when we did this, but when we started creating graphs, we got a little bit sideways.
Um, engineers.
Get lost in the lead.
Um, we are also in the process, and I hope to have it by the end of the meeting, so we may come back to this. I've also asked, starting at the beginning of this fiscal year, to come up with the top twenty by hours that the administrator, that the engineering staff is putting together, we're just putting some final touches on that to make sure that it's consistent, and I'll share that information as soon as it becomes available, like I said, hopefully by the end of this meeting, so. Again, this is just a, the first effort, and if we are successful and you like some of the visual cues that you see here, it'd be really easy to add them to the general manager's report, so it could be one of those things when you're flipping through, and you can see exactly what it is. Uh, I know that, uh, finance is working with our contract analyst right now to come up with a way to get all of this in one, so we can do it on a more regular basis, so I appreciate you asking for this, because it's made, it's gonna make us, uh, do things a little bit differently, because right now we're, we're drawing from two different locations, because our finance system struggles to bring everything together, but we're gonna make sure that we can do that, so we, so it doesn't take so long to do. It's always takes the longest for the first one, and this was the first one, so.
I appreciate General Manager Macy, and anything we can do to keep from struggling would be a good idea.
Well, we're working on a new finance system, and hopefully all these things will be tightening up a little bit.
Can we kind of talk a little bit about well forty-two?
Sure.
Um, you know, I'm, I'm looking at the, the descriptions or the category, and there are so many duplicates, and I know that it means something different, and the, the last three obviously got separated, but that three million dollar line that's just construction, so that's going to be the actual work once all the designs are done, and we shouldn't have spent any of that yet, right? Like, it looks like we did spend one point three million of it.
Yes, well.
What did we construct it so far?
So well forty-two has been drilled. So, we did the design, we did a test hole, and then we did a, we did a pump test. When we went to construction and actually put a well down there to do another pump test, when we actually drilled it with the casing and everything else, we got more water coming out of that location than we expected. And that's why that project, not necessarily was delayed or put on hold, but we wanted to grab as much water as we could, because we were now getting more water than we thought we would.
So we had to redesign to reach, to increase pump capacity.
Exactly, so you're talking about looking at the pump itself, looking at the electrical panels, and then also we did some field adjustments to make sure that we could pump to both the fourteen hundred zone and to the terrace reservoirs, because we had that set up on twenty-two, twenty-four. And we're now adding that to twenty-two as part of our rehab for that well, so we wanted to have that flexibility in all three of those wells at that location. And then just to add, it's just a, it's an, at an ideal elevation that allows us to accomplish that, if we're, if we're any lower in our system, we probably wouldn't be able to get to the fourteen hundred zone, or, or to be able to do both of those efficiently, so it's just, it works out best. And so, and this is why, again, this is probably so helpful, because you see that the construction, we have, had, we did come to a stopping point, and then when we were asking for, why are we asking for all these amendments to our existing contracts? Because we have been waiting for that new pump, the redesigned pump to be delivered, so we could finish the rest of it. So when you go out there right now, you'll see like it's a giant spider coming out of the ground, and that is where they stopped after they drilled the well, the casing, and started, and that's where it was a stopping point before they actually installed the pump down the hole. Once they do that, then they can then put the building around it, and then start putting all the other facilities inside, the panels and everything like that.
Okay, I have another request.
Okay.
Uh, since this space for job number is really large, could you compact that, and maybe off to the right, put an expected completion date, so we have an idea?
Hmm.
Sure.
And then as a little side note, I know that you've been very busy, but, um, we haven't received the invoices from the other contractors yet. The well forty-two project.
And I apologize for that, I've got the link in my computer, but
You've been out of town.
I was trying to get all the files, so I could send it to you, so you could open them one by one, unfortunately, I believe that that directory is so large, I'm gonna have to send you a share file.
Okay.
And then you can download all of them on your iPads or on your surfaces, so I was trying to make it easy and break it down, but couple of the files are so large, it's gonna be difficult, so I'm just gonna have to do a shared folder, and I was trying to get away.
Do our work, it's okay. Thank you.
But yes, I do have, we have all of those, I just haven't had a chance.
Just a little reminder.
No, I, I appreciate that.
Okay.
I appreciate the feedback, and if there's anything else we can do to make this easier, then we're all ears. Um, but I do again, as we were doing with some of the financial things earlier this year, uh, the requests were helpful, because we found out some of the things that we weren't appropriately tracking. I guess we're tracking everything, but as being able to see it in a visual perspective, it wasn't there, so.
And, and this is only our currently active construction.
And not even all of them, this is just.
What I thought.
These were the one.
We're missing a few, okay.
It's their current active projects, because projects are active, but have cost.
Not necessarily.
And then necessarily has gone to a construction stage. What thirty-four, for example, it's designed, it's under construction, but it's, it's sort of halfway through. Thirty-five is being, is, is finalizing the design, and then the intertie between the two, it's also in design.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to get a general consensus of what the appearance would be, and then we're gonna add all the rest of the projects.
Hands over fist easier for me to read than the CIP list that we've had in the past, so, thank you.
Arturo, you okay with that?
It's great, just to have the, the separation like we have, it makes it really clear. I know this was a lot of work for you guys, because our programs don't do it automatically, so thank you.
Okay, and like I said, we may come back to this item, President, once we get the, um, once we get the, uh, office information, so. So not to hold up the process.
But overall, you see it being a bigger benefit than the amount of time you're gonna have to, because it's gonna be a living document that's constantly getting.
Right, so right now we maintain roughly two spreadsheets, we're going to work with finance to put that into a format that both, when they come out of the finance system, they're gonna have the same size columns, the same size, so we can just dump it in the bottom, and then we'll just do one data dump once a month, and then we're just tracking it that way in one spreadsheet, at least that's the way we're talking about it right now, so yeah.
And, uh, real quick, just a bit, uh, to remind you of the information that we're representing every month, uh, the capital improvement project list does, uh, have the current month charges.
Yeah.
And the year-to-date, which basically tells you that's what we're working on, um, either this month or throughout the year, as a, uh, that data that we report.
And I guess for me, that report would be fine if we were able to sort it based on what was active versus what was completed, you know, and that, if, if we sorted it based on that, it would be a more user-friendly document.
Well, maybe that's, so the, sort the project itself.
So where's the status, like, if we sorted it based on all of the completed ones, all of the paused ones, the ongoing ones, so that we can see in front of our face what is current, and then can refer to what's been finished, would make it much easier. Yeah, you could even put them on a separate sheet, like the completed ones you could put on the next sheet behind and, and remove it. But yeah, I mean, if you wanted, if that, if this is gonna be too cumbersome, that would work better if we sorted it based on that. That's my only input. But great information, thank you very much.
Anything further? On item five? Thank you very much, we'll go on to item six, draft audit report. I'm assuming it's Arturo.
Yes. Thank you, President Sewell, and members of the board, um, General Manager Macy. I am going to, I'm very happy to introduce our first annual comprehensive, uh, financial report. We, we have in the past only prepared financial statements. Uh, this report is going to give us an opportunity to present more information to the public, uh, and to everyone that's looking at the district board, backup, or any type of information about what it is that we're doing. Uh, it also ties, uh, full circle now with the strategic plan, a lot of the, what are we doing with the money, where is our efforts going in terms of the actual numbers at the end of the year, um, compared to what we have seen in the past. Uh, so what I'm gonna do is real quick, go over a general overview of how the audit happens, and then I'll jump into the, uh, report itself. Uh, do keep in mind, it is a draft, uh, we are still doing a final technical review, uh, to ensure all the page numbers line up, uh, and also any, uh, information that might be missing in here, um, in terms of the grammar and names and everything else that's involved with that. The audit is primarily started in May, uh, the auditors get a head start at, at the end of the year. Uh, they're coming around July, but we're still working on a lot of the information through the end of the month. Um, they start by looking at everything through April. Uh, there is a lot of, some expenses that are pretty, uh, uh, concise, they're not gonna change all of the project expenses, uh, that are over a certain amount. Uh, they go through the numbers at that point and determine an amount that they're gonna look at based on the potential risk uh, for there to be any information that is not correct in those counts. Uh, they always look at cash, anything involving cash always gets looked at, uh, but then there's other accounts that, you know, will have like a thirty dollar transaction, there's really no need to review a thirty dollar when we're talking millions of dollars at the end of the day. Uh, if there is a concern though, that came up during the audit review, or by looking at the, uh, board minutes, uh, which they do every year to identify those large items that they want to verify happened, uh, then they go back and look at anything else that is of concern. Uh, they, uh, come in, uh, later on in the year, around October, to, uh, look at everything through the end of the year. Uh, they look at all of the internal controls, what does that mean? If we tell them that we locked the safe, uh, where all our cash is, they go and verify that the safe, uh, is, uh, closed and, and nothing, you know, no one, without access can get in there. Uh, if we tell them we lock up the, uh, checks, then they go verify that the checks are, uh, in the vault, uh, and no one else has access to them, they could potentially, you know, take them and write themselves a check, you know, for a certain amount. Um, they also go through, uh, pick certain transactions at random. Uh, for example, they'll look at, uh, a customer bill, they'll, they'll look at the, uh, meter to see what the reading was, verify it with the, uh, amount that we're charging the customer, uh, and then basically run it through until that customer pays. So every single point of information they go through to confirm that our system is working, and it's doing what it's supposed to do.
I think, uh, Robert may have the same question I have, where did they get the statistics that they used for the district statistics?
That is from the disadvantaged community, uh, section, uh, presented by the, uh, by the, the state water control.
It's higher than two different places that have reported the statistics, I mean, they said that we were a thirty-four thousand annual income with thirty-two percent being renter, you know, being homeowners occupying the rest for renters or otherwise. So this seems to be a little higher than it should be in, in reality.
Correct, and don't forget that it includes some sections of Whitewater and, uh, with, uh, Bonnie Bell, uh, side of the, uh, district, so it's not just the city of Desert Hot Springs.
Okay, so that could, I guess, potentially bring it up to ten thousand dollars a year.
Correct.
I guess.
Yeah, and I can provide that, uh, the site where we got that information, for sure.
Was I reading your mind, Director Griffith?
Yeah, what page is that?
It's a page, uh, five.
I recognize some inconsistencies, starting at twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. It looks like it's jumped up significantly in the last year or two, so it's no longer the thirty-four, thirty-eight thousand we had before. So, we have noticed that there has been a significant uptick in our median household income.
Okay. Um, I guess we're not seeing, you're saying.
That's, that was the one thing. Yeah, Skyborne and Neillson to sixty-two.
Yes.
And they have been, then they have been adding some homes over there, so it is possible to, that those are raising everybody's property values and things of that nature. I guess the other side of it is, I mean, the property tax is gonna be a little bit higher than they expected. But, this is a minor suggestion on my part, but in the future, uh, might be a good idea for us to get something like this in advance of the workshop, so it's not all presented here, so we can review it ahead of time and, and write down any questions that we may, might wanna have. This will not be the only time you see this document, we'll be bringing it back to you for a receive and file to the workshop. I, I know we're in the middle of the presentation from, but that was something he was gonna talk about, is the next steps as it relates to this drawn, this document, so yes, we, you will see it again.
Uh, yes, the auditors will be here on the, uh, during the, uh, uh, study session to do a presentation of the entire report, and go over the highlights with the board, and have the opportunity for you to ask them directly any questions that you may have, uh, so that it's not just on staff that, uh, provided you any of the answers, and
Okay.
for you to make sure that you're getting what you need.
Good.
Um, and obviously, part of the, uh, numbers, uh, a lot of the numbers we grouped together, but a lot of times don't make sense, we have the narrative presented in the report itself of those major items that we want to educate our customers and everyone else looking at our, uh, report. Um, and we have added several new items in there, uh, from the previous report that we have been adding, uh, again, to give a, a better history and what happened, uh, throughout the, uh, the, uh, this audit. Uh, then, again, it goes to the board for, uh, to receive and file, uh, before it gets, uh, approved, and then we start distributing to all the agencies, a lot of the, our debt, uh, agencies get a copy, the city gets a copy, the state, uh, and then we have to also report, uh, summarized numbers to the state, to ensure that we're following all the guidelines and, uh, requirements that they have on all of our accounts. And finally, the report is issued, so what I'm gonna do now is I'm gonna give you a quick rundown of what is different uh, from the previous report. Uh, do remember that this is a draft, we, more than likely, it will change. What, uh, I will do is I will do attract changes on my, when we're doing those, uh, fixes, and bring them to you at the, uh, work, at the study session, so that you can see exactly what changed, and get an opportunity to review, um, all the information at once. So I'm just going to be again, going over the, uh, main items that are different from the previous report. Um, so you can see, if you pull up our report online, um, this, these are the items that are different. Uh, to starters, it has a actual cover page, um, for the report, the other report does not. The charts. When you see this page intentionally left blank, what it means, it's probably the second page of that, uh, of that item, and there's nothing to report, and we just wanna go straight into another, um, uh, major item of the report. Uh, first of all, the, uh, this is a letter to the Board of Directors, uh, going over the, uh, i- information that we want you to know about what happened during the, the year. Uh, here we talk about all our customers, the, uh, the, the number of, uh, increases, the, the way that the acter, uh, works in reporting it to the state and also to the GFRA. Uh, our, uh, goal to, uh, receive that excellence certificate, and we're going to be applying for it in addition to the general about the district, uh, we, the approximately forty-four thousand residents, uh, the number of medals that we have received, uh, and basically, again, all of the general information before it goes into the, uh, presenting the Board of Directors in our mission statement. Uh, the boundary of the district, the district statistics, which are summarized in, uh, the, uh, beginning of the report, but then get more detailed towards the end, and then the, uh, history of the, uh, of the district. It's very detailed of everything that, how we got here from the, the beginning of the Mission Springs Water District. Talks about our, uh, Horton Plant, our reclamation facility, the new, uh, right plant, uh, all of the items that we comply with in terms of the, uh, Management Planning Act, urban water, uh, the, um, Sigma, the salt and nutrient management plan. The major accomplishments, which, which again, uh, are tied back to the, uh, strategic plan that was done before, and will be updated, a lot of that information for the, from the current, uh, was mentioned in here as well. Uh, and finally, some finance, financial information about how our reports are, uh, prepared and what's included in there, uh, what the internal controls are, what the accounting system is doing, the budget process, long-term financial planning that we're in the process of doing right now, the debt management and coverage of what our policies are, and what our designated funds are, so if you look at our reports and look at designated funds, again, a lot of that, a lot of times, they, they don't make sense, what are they? Uh, we don't have to explain them in a regular financial statement, here we give you more detail, so you can see what exactly is happening there. And finally, our source of revenue, um, the main items of the district is earning.
Thank you.
Uh, followed by the org chart, and again, it's just a big picture of the, uh, district and the employees. And then it goes into the normal financial statements that you're used to seeing. I will leave these for the auditor to, uh, share with you, unless you have any questions that I, uh, you want me to answer, we can go over those. Um, otherwise, the next large change is at the bottom of the report. In these, starts with the statistical section. Here we have to provide information about the district and the city, um, in all of our area that we cover, uh, starting with net position by component, uh, basically net position means, again, those restricted and unrestricted funds, uh, that we've had. You can see in twenty-fourteen, we were in the hole on land restricted, two million dollars, and that quickly turned into sixty-seven million dollars in the positive in twenty-twenty-three, primarily because of the regional plant construction. The changes in net position, again, going into up, detail more, uh, showing the components, not just the totals. The summary of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position, uh, again, it's a ten-year, uh, report. The summary of revenue and expenses, and a graph to show that. The, uh, the source of revenue. Expenses by function, which, uh, we presented now, uh, to you and all of our financial data. Uh, variance water rates, uh, what our, uh, rates have been for those ten years, uh, for history purposes. And the fixed water rates, again, our fixed charges in the water, uh, bills, water deliveries. Um, so you can compare, uh, years, um, based on any, uh, information you're looking at, and what, um, where our water is coming from. Top ten domestic water customers, um, they wanna see what, uh, who our biggest customers are. Uh, for example, let's say that the, uh, Off-Screens Unified School District, all of a sudden. Off screens unified school district all of a sudden goes away. Well, there goes our biggest customer. Um, so we need to present that information to show that we don't rely on one particular customer and that it is pretty much uh. Spread out throughout the district. Sewer rates are the same as the water, just showing you the history, the wastewater treated. Um, based on uh acre foot, acre feet. Top ten sewer customers. Again, uh, these are our customers that are based on consumption. Skys Haven HOA is the biggest for the district. And again, showing the uh. Where all of our customers, um, where we're earning that revenue from these type of customers. Property taxes. It also shows you the ten year uh component of the basic. Uh, to and comparing it to the largest uh water districts in the area with banning unified school district, Coachella Valley Water. Desert Community College, Desert Water Agency. All of that information is in here in terms of the percentages that they get allocated. And the assessed values of properties as well. Taxable assessed value history. And the top ten property taxpayers. Um, again, this is based on the information that we received. Through a statistical analysis uh of the information that was provided to us. Computation of uh legal debt margin. Again, it's not necessarily the district. It's basically the entire area. And where a lot of that risk potentially is. Uh, if we had a bankrupt bankruptcy with the city. Uh, all of that information is important to us because it allows us to make decisions as things happen in the community. Outstanding debt by type. Again, this is for the entire uh district. And direct and overlapping debt, which means uh any uh joint debt that we might have with other districts like the community college. Uh, which we don't. Uh, demographics and economic statistics in Riverside County, the last ten calendar years. Population of major cities in the Coachella Valley. Employers, the top ten employers in the Riverside County. So all of this, as you can see, is new information that we're reporting. Uh, based on that statistical data that we received that is required under the annual comprehensive uh report. Anyone looking at our district is looking at the entire Coachella Valley and seeing what's happening. If they see the growth coming to our side of the uh district, uh, they're gonna see that in the financial report. They get a bigger picture of what's happening based on these numbers than just uh what's happening here uh with us. So again, these are all statistics that we have to add. Uh, is there any questions that you have that I can answer at this time?
I noticed in total revenue versus total expenses on sheet fifty eight. The revenue has a large increase over expenses, which I'm guessing is the grant. That we like the grant reimbursement. So we don't typically, we don't get that grant reimbursement until the expense hits our sheet. So does that mean that capital projects are not in this?
No.
Because.
That's not what it means. Uh, we are in a full accrual uh accounting, which means we record revenue when earned. Not when received. So when we earn that grant is when we're uh reporting it. Uh, just like we do with our uh vendors. If we have a contract that uh went through June thirtieth. And they bail us in July, we have to report that amount due to them at Ju- June thirtieth. Uh, even though we haven't paid it. So that's what we have to. That's a part of our accounting process.
Uh, because it's an obligation.
And it's accounting rules and the fact that we follow full uh accrual. And we were a cash basis accounting, which um it's not recommended because it doesn't show a true picture of the district, but it's an option. Uh, we were reporting when cash was collected or when actually we paid cash. So just the type of accrual that we follow.
So in twenty twenty four, they'll line up closer and then twenty twenty five, the expenses will hit and level it out.
So again, this is just the first draft of this report for the twenty twenty three fiscal year. Gives you the opportunity to review it before the next uh study session. Uh, and at that point, you can answer any other questions you may have. Uh, I'm very excited to the fact that again, this is our first annual comprehensive report. Uh, in addition to the regular information that we were already providing. Uh, and again, if there's any questions you may have in the meantime, please send them away. Otherwise, you can uh, we can answer them on Thursday of next week, including bringing the auditor to give you a final presentation. Uh, all the information and what if what they have to do to get the audit completed. Uh, from speaking to all staff to reviewing the minutes of the board and everything else that they go through.
Great.
Thank you.
Anything further on item six?
Yeah, just one comment reviewing this. It makes me glad I pursued a career in law enforcement instead of finance. I mean, it's a very impressive document, very lot of information here that we. Have to do before the next meeting and stuff and and I'm very impressed. Good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Moving on to item seven, solar project discussion. General.
Uh, thank you, President Sewell. Uh, solar project discussion is just going to be an opportunity for us to present. Really the same project we've seen in the past, but looking at it from a different perspective. When we were doing it before. It was something that was going to be uh our project. We were responsible for the finance and all of those things. But as we were looking at our finance and we started talking to some of the uh, some of the banking institutions, we realized that that may impact our borrowing capacity. And we did not want to impact that. So we asked Kenwood Engineering, is there other opportunities? And they said yes. So we asked them to present today to show you what those options are. Tim, are you on the call? Are we ready to share the screen with you?
Yes. Yeah, I'm ready to go. So um, do you guys want to pull it up or do you want me to share my screen?
Can you share your screen?
Yes. Hey, are you guys seeing? Oh, no, I have to share. There it is. Okay, are you seeing a presentation now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, um, and if um, I'll go ahead and put it in presentation mode. See if that worked. Okay. So um, just a little bit of background on who we are. Uh, we are Kenwood Energy. We are a consulting company. Uh, I'm Tim Holmes. I'm a professional mechanical engineer and Donna Boyson is on the calls um also. Uh, we've been in business for twenty five years and we are consultants in energy management. So we do analysis. We help uh. Our customers with requests for proposals, contract review. We do project management of construction and we do anything related to energy use, savings, billing. Question, you know, anything that our customers may have and questions, we try to help. One thing we are not, though. Is we are not selling any products and we are not a contractor. So we're not. Uh, if if you were to implement a project like this, we would try to sit on your side of the table. And uh just support you kind of as an extension of your staff. So this is a summary of the project that NG had presented. It's been a little while, so I just took all the main facts. You know, there were seven, seven sites. One of them was an RES BCT and I won't go into what that is. And six of them were behind the meter. Behind the meter means you install them and they offset costs at that site. Uh, the total capacity was gonna be four thousand one hundred sixty seven KW or four point one six seven megawatts. Uh, they were projected to generate about eleven million kilowatt hours a year. Uh, the cost was at the last I saw, it was at seventeen million, eight hundred seventeen thousand. You guys were gonna lease slash finance it. Um, and one of the most important things is you, the the district has applied for. Has submitted interconnection applications with Southern California Edison. So you were. Grandfathered into something called net energy metering two. And uh, and you have until April of twenty twenty six to complete the installation to. To keep that designation of net energy metering two. Uh, net energy metering three is um a lot less attractive in the way. That they structure how you get compensation for your solar system. So um, it would be a good idea to take advantage of those interconnection applications. This is kind of the main slide here is um, so there are actually three ways to buy a solar system is you guys. If you had the cash, you could just do it through a capital per purchase. Uh, that's not on this slide. You guys were going to. He called it a lease, but it was more of just a financing program. You're just gonna finance the project. And then there's a sec- another way called a power purchase agreement. And um, so the advantages of financing the project is that. Essentially, you can create an instant positive cash flow, meaning that your energy savings can be greater. Than your your finance payments. So you have a net positive cash flow every single year. The negatives of uh financing it is that the district is still responsible for the operations and maintenance. So you have to pay somebody to do maintenance of the system. And then if something should go wrong with the system, you have to pay for all those repairs and you're responsible for that. The another big disadvantage that Brian had mentioned was that the district holds the debt, so it shows up on your debt sheet. Number three is that if it is a lease, if you're actually leasing it, it's like leasing your car. At the end of the term. There is, you know, somebody else owns this. So at the end of the term, you have to somehow transfer ownership and you can do that. Through can extending the lease or you have to buy the system. The value at the end of the 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 term is pretty close to zero, but it means you have to go through a process of transfer ownership. And then uh with the financing, you have a constant payment regardless of how much energy is produced. And you know, for some reason that's those systems break, you still have to make your lease payments or finance payments, even if it's not. Generating any energy at that time. The difference is that a power purchase agreement is, you know, the advantage is again, you still have a positive cash flow. The the solar system is funded by a third party. They they pay for it and they own it. So you don't have any out of pocket expense. Because they own it, they also are responsible for all operations, maintenance, and repairs. And there is no district debt because what you're doing is you're just taking money that you used to pay to the utility. And you're now paying it to this PPA vendor because you're actually saving money. So it does not hit your books as debt. Um, number five is you pay for the energy generation only. And it also means that if something goes wrong with the system and it's not generating energy, you don't have to pay. The vendor takes all the tax benefits. So you know, I I think you remember we were jumping through some hoops, trying to figure out. If uh you guys qualified for tax benefits, we applied. I think we're getting ready to apply for. The special low income adder to the tax benefits. Well, the vendor is gonna take care of all that. We don't have to jump through those hoops. Um, and the performance guarantee is included, just like the operations and maintenance. You know, the negative side of it is that it is a um, it is a long term contract. So you really need to do a a lot more, I shouldn't say a lot more, you still. But you need to make sure that you have reviewed the contract in detail and you understand uh what you've. Engaged in for probably twenty years. Um, so um, that's a, that's a quite a bit of work. Right now, we don't know the actual PPA price. So what I have done is I've uh in some of the next slides, you'll see some pricing. But I've estimated um, tried to make uh an aggressive estimate and some fairly conservative estimates also. And then at the end of the PPA term, just like with a lease. You don't own the system, so you can extend your PPA. You can buy the system for something called fair market value, which after twenty years, that's gonna be very low. Or you include in the contract that the the vendor has to take everything away and return your property into. Uh, as it was before they even built the system. So that's all included in in the PPA. The, so one thing I did do is um, since we last talked. Uh, Southern California Edison has published rate increases. Um, so that. Twenty twenty four, they have already implemented a fifteen percent rate increase. In twenty twenty five, they are planning a twenty three percent rate increase. And then published, they've say in twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, it's gonna be six percent per year. Um, so when I did this analysis here, I included those. So the the basis of this analysis is um. Southern um NG had stated that uh there would be eight hundred and five thousand dollars in savings per year. Kenwood Energy did a peer review of that and came in, came out with very, very similar numbers. So we're pretty confident in those savings. We increased those savings in year and I increased those savings right from the beginning by fifteen percent. And then in twenty twenty five, which is shows up as year two, I increased it by another twenty three percent. But the rest of these graphs, it it is increasing the savings by six percent per year. So that orange graph is um, that represents the lease. That or or the financing that you would have done with NG. Um, it shows an initial cost of five hundred thousand dollars because it takes a while to build it and you're gonna be holding quite a bit of debt. And I think there is interest and internal costs. Um, and then you can see way out at year nineteen, all of a sudden there it has kind of a little tick. That goes up. That's because after nineteen years, you're done paying your lease. Um, and then I have three PPAs that are essentially the exact same. Graph, same curve, but the green graph is assuming that you got a PPA at seven and a half cents per kilowatt hour. And the purple is at nine cents and the blue is at ten and a half cents. I just finished with a customer uh in California. That had a four megawatt system and they're paying, I think, seven point six cents. So um, seven and a half cents is aggressive. I think you could, the purple line of nine cents is. Uh, something we could expect and I think uh ten point five would be a worst case scenario. And you can see I started with the over at zero year. Um, I assumed that there'd be two hundred thousand dollars worth of internal costs. So there is a little bit of negative in those cash flows. You can see both the green line and the purple line basically are showing that right from the beginning, you have that instant positive cash flow. The blue line of tens, ten and a half cents shows that the for the first few years, first couple of years, you're gonna have a. Nominal negative cash flow, but based on the um. Uh, increases that Southern California Edison is gonna have, you'd be positive net cash flow after six years. And then on the very right side, that's essentially your net present value and we've assumed a discount rate, inflation rates. Um, degradation of output over time. And all those assumptions are on the very last slide, which I will show you very quickly. So what are the next steps is the district needs to decide whether solar is something that it should pursue. And if it does, the step after that would be to uh develop a request proposal. And um, that is, uh, you know, I'm very roughly guessing a two to four month process. And it's probably a twenty to forty thousand dollar cost. Uh, then if you get a positive response to that request for proposal, meaning that you. You get a bunch of proposals and you find one that looks good. Then you need to enter into a contract. And again, this is, it's a long term, reasonably complex contract. So you know, it'd take two to three months to review that. Kenwood Energy would look at it on the energy side, but you'd also need um a legal team that hopefully is is uh familiar with PPAs. And again, estimating the cost there at twenty to forty thousand dollars. Then there's the construction and the construction takes a while. Uh, because there's due diligence that uh the vendor has to do because they are gonna own this. So they're essentially leasing, leasing a bit of your land for the purpose of installing this. And they have to have access. They have to make sure they don't have, there are no liens on that land, that there are no right aways they need to be concerned about. So they have some some uh due diligence they have to do, which makes it take a bit longer. The construction is. Comfortably twelve months or less, but getting to construction um takes a bit of time. And uh, you know, external costs are estimated to be about a hundred thousand dollars. And um, then these are all of the assumptions that we made in here, the the KW, the those are the knowns. From uh the uh NG proposal. Um, I highlighted there the up upfront cost of two hundred thousand dollars. And then also one thing that's different is uh we estimated that. And then also one thing that's different is uh we estimated that the IRA tax credit is at twenty five point five percent and that you're not gonna get any of the low income bonuses and things, even though you probably are in a low income area. They have a different term for it, but I can't remember what it is. But you're probably in there, but you have to apply and be selected to get that extra bonus, which we would do. But just to be conservative, I didn't uh include that in there. And uh that's the end of the presentation. So I'm open to questions and I assume there'll be a few.
Yeah, I have I have one, but it's gonna be directed towards our general manager. How does this compare to the solar field construction that we previously that we already have out there? How is it the 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 term, the terms, et cetera? How does it compare?
So that we we purchased that, we received a grant for AQMD and then we built that ourselves, much like we were proposing with the NG. We were going to own and maintain it and get the full benefit. However, that we ran into that financing issue. Um from that perspective, it's one megawatt. And we have seen ca- casual positive cash flow, I think almost since year three. What right now we're generating, you know how much we're generating a megawatt, but the savings to us
ranges anywhere from a hundred and fifty seven, I believe, to a hundred and eighty seven thousand.
So if we're at a hun- yeah, if we're a hundred and fifty, a hundred and eighty, and this is just over four, so multiply that by four. So yeah, it's it's a significant savings. And that's why um I know we all sort of got solar. I at least from a project perspective, fatigue, if you will, because we talked about it for so long. Um but it was all going to the due diligence. And I don't think this project's gonna have that same issue because I think we've learned a lot from our last presentation. So from that perspective, um yes, we do see the benefit. And also because that M two point O does expire in April of two thousand, excuse me, twenty twenty six. Uh that was the other reason we wouldn't bring this back now versus waiting a little bit longer. When we were closer to the long range financial plan, we thought it would be beneficial to do it now. So.
I guess the question I have is um for Tim, the NIM two point O that we're qualified for, is that needed if we did the power purchase agreement or only if we did it ourselves through the lease or financing?
It it applies to both conditions. So what that does is um the difference between NIM two and NIM three is when you're generating more energy than you're using on site, it goes on to PG and E's transmission distribution system. Under NIM two, you essentially use that as a battery. And you can use that energy and get back about ninety percent of the retail cost of transmission, distribution and generation. What they do under NIM three is everything that you export to the grid, they pay instead of giving it to you at a full retail rate, they pay you a wholesale rate, which is about six cents. So anything that you exported right under NIM two is probably twenty three cents worth of energy. And under NIM three, anything you export is about six cents. It still makes economic sense. It's still a good idea, but the NIM two is uh applies to both PPAs and ownership. And it's a much better deal than the NIM three.
And if we did this four kilowatt system, we would be exporting a significant amount?
Well, each, I didn't do that analysis, but in general, you know, that was done by NG. So but in general, when you put solar on any facility during the peak part of the day or on weekends, for example, when a uh an office building might be closed or something, you are gonna generate energy and it's gonna be, you're gonna generate more than you're using on site during the daytime. And there's a portion of it that is gonna be exported to the utility.
Any additional questions?
So I have a question. We have to complete this project by two thousand twenty six, wasn't it?
Correct. To get the full benefit of a net metering two point O.
What's the initial outline? Outline for uh financing that we have to come up with? We don't know that yet or?
Tim, can you go back to the previous slide where you showed what the cost to the district would be?
Well, i- it's actually shown in green here. The the P under a PPA, all of the construction costs are borne by the PPA company. And um so there really aren't any construction costs, but to get to the point of having this built, obviously, there are gonna be some internal costs or consulting fees, some legal fees. I've put in green here that they are two hundred thousand dollars. And if you go back to this slide, way on the left, you can see that all of those lines start just a tiny bit below zero. That's where that two hundred thousand is.
Staying with this slide, Tim, so when you look at this, this shows the negative balance the first couple of years. But if you can go to the next slide, Tim.
Um this one?
This one right here. What we would, what I think staff would recommend and is asking for the ability to go out and get an RFP. Based on that cost there, you're looking at twenty to forty thousand dollars. So we can can then determine what that PPA price is. And then that goes back to the graph where you see where do we fall in there? He was talking about his last project with seven point seven six cents, I think, or seven, uh seven point six cents. He's expecting nine and it could be as high as ten. So that's where the difference in that's difference in benefit to us. But I think what we're going to be asking for recommending is that we at least go to the RFP process. It's anywhere from twenty to forty thousand dollars and then we can stop the project at that point. But that way we'll at least know what the benefit will be versus the range that we have now. So the financing and all that moving forward would actually be the responsibility of whoever we contract with. It would not be on ours.
So we're gonna spend somewhere between twenty and forty thousand dollars to verify most of the information that we already have?
No, to actually get a contractor that would then build it. And then we would buy the power from them.
So we're gonna pay the contractor twenty to forty thousand dollars to give us a bid?
No, we have to prepare the document that basically sets the parameters of what they're going to be building for us. The size of the facilities, where the locations are, um the size requirements for each one, because not all the sites are the same size. What the estimated size of those facilities are, we have to put that into a document so you can bid it.
So then there's twenty to forty thousand dollars is what we'll be spending in-house.
Correct, correct.
And can I ask a question when we put, if if we decided to put this out for an RFP? Can we have it? I don't know how we would do it, but there's a larger project and then there's what is it, five or six smaller projects? Is there a way in which we can request them to bid those individually so that we can see like maybe we can only afford one of the seven? And instead of having to put it back out for another bid and spending that money again, could, is there a way that we can request their bids to come? To show like if we chose just this one larger project, here's what it would cost. If we chose them all, here's what it would cost. If we chose the other five individually.
Before I kick this to Tim, it's not necessarily what it's gonna cost for us. It's the benefit that we receive. Because the cost is going to be what the contractor or what the owner of the facility that they build on our facilities costs. So we can, we are not paying for any of that. Unlike the NG project where we have to finance the entire thing, somebody else is gonna take care of that. We can divide it. But I think what it will impact is the benefit in that curve because we won't get the same benefit, right? We'll be paying fifteen cents if we only do four or something like that. Tim, did I state that correctly?
That's correct. And the short answer to um the board member's question is yes, we we can structure it so that uh it's priced for per site, you can make it, we could or we could have a base bid and uh an alternate adder. You know, there are ways to address that.
I'm just trying to think of a way to make this biggest bang for the buck. And I'm trying to look ahead at what might be some of our concerns and and if we're able to get one RFP out that would allow for those variances as a potential, then we wouldn't have to spend another twenty or forty thousand to send it out a second time.
But I think, I I think if you start to separate it out, I think that your PPA costs are going to actually go up because if I'm building this and I'm only doing a portion or whatever, in there's the scale. And the bigger the scale, the more power I'm gonna get, the more I'm gonna give you a better rate. Because I'm gonna make more on my side, but if it's smaller, I'm probably gonna charge you a higher rate. And I think if your RFP cost is, say, twenty thousand dollars, your RFP cost is twenty thousand dollars, whether you separate it or keep it as one.
But if we don't request them to separate it and then that ends up being what we need, then we have to spend another twenty thousand sending it back out again.
Why would we need to separate?
Well, let's say they come and even the total, the total project is something higher than we can swallow. We may then have to decide like we wanna do just you know, i- there's still a possibility we won't be able to afford the whole thing.
But we're not paying for.
We're paying a monthly fee to these people. We're not gonna be paying.
Paying, we're paying.
Aren't we paying a lease payment to them of some sort or a PPA monthly payment?
We're paying for the power that we use that is generated by that, which would be discounted from what the SCE power cost would be. No, you're right. We're cha- we're changing the entire philosophy versus us paying into the lease payment or a debt service payment. We're only paying for the power that is available when the sun comes out. If there is a problem with the solar field at that time and we don't take any power, we don't pay anything. It's complete. That's the the nice thing about a PPA is all the risk shifts to whoever we come up with that agreement for.
Uh Tim, did you present that information in the um items? What is the actual estimated cost uh to the district on a monthly basis? Based on uh those numbers?
Um I did not it, but it's um so you can see uh the blue lines, let's say it's ten cents. So if you go back here under number four, you're generating eleven million KWH. So on an annual basis, you'd be paying the P PPA company somewhere around one point one million dollars. And the fact that we are saying that you would save eight hundred and five thousand means that what you would have been paying um Southern California Edison is instead of one point one, you would have been paying them one point nine million.
Do we have any estimate of what we pay right now for power? You mean per kilowatt? Not just our overall? Just for, we're, yeah.
I believe the last time that we spoke about this is our our total cost to Edison is in almost two million dollar range, two point one million.
And I don't know what we use, but isn't it somewhere like in the thirty pers- thirty cents per kilowatt or something like that?
That's what I'm saying. We have so many time of use costs, I can't really get.
That's what I thought.
We have so, so and just to to clarify that.
I think they said, let me think.
Because we have so many different rates for the different sites.
I think you pay less in residential. Cause I remember one of the meetings, I was kinda shocked.
It's less than twenty cents a kilowatt. It's less than that, but I'm saying like to give you an actual number. I don't have it.
So let's say it's less than twenty. So that's the difference in why this chart is so important, that because if we're paying somebody ten cents, it's still ten cent savings.
I have to qualify that a little bit, Brian, is that there are some costs that you cannot offset um by energy savings. So you know, if you were paying twenty cents, you know, the potential savings might be fifteen because you still have to pay your monthly fees, you have to pay demand charges. Um there there are some things that you can't get out of. So you're still gonna have a Southern California Edison bill. And it could still be reasonably significant, but the, you know, wh- wh- you can at least affect some of it.
But Tim, uh just to double check, Tim, were those um costs included in these curves? Are they reflected in these curves?
The these curves are focusing on savings um. You know, in the next step during the RFP process and looking at all your accounts, I think it would be worthwhile to have a a an additional table that doesn't just show savings and the cash flow, but also projects what your energy costs would look like in the future. You know, to have a table that says you have these five solar systems, you're gonna be paying one point one million dollars to a PPA company. But you're also gonna still be paying X amount to Southern California Edison. I I commonly do that uh just to make sure that everybody knows we're not eliminating your Southern California Edison bill. They just you know, won't allow us to do that. We'd like to.
And that number I think would be very important to us because we need to actually see what our actual savings will be and what the cost will actually be. So.
Yeah, that that's something we really did have last time.
Last time, Brian, when it was presented, it was because we were paying for the system. They kept saying, what's the cost savings, the benefit? And what the question was is what's gonna cost us? And that's what essentially essentially arrived the decision to to pass on that on that process. But in this case, what Tim had shown up is a twenty to forty, with a twenty to forty. It's an all in cost, just because we pay a, say, a a consultant to prepare the documents. They're still in-house labor, so anywhere from twenty to forty thousand, anywhere from. So whether we do half the project or all of the project, we still have those sunk costs and to get us to that point where we can actually issue a contract. I I think that. And that's the cost that would pay for us to get into it. What you're asking for is something that shows you if we stick with Edison, we're gonna pay this much. If we st- if we go this route, we still have Edison obligations, but we're paying only this much. And it looks like this at the end of the day.
It should be simpler than that, but it might not be. What I'm, what we're looking for here is what are we actually paying to Edison every year right now?
In in the, in the uh area of north of two million dollars a year.
How come you don't have an exact?
You can.
If I was asked for that number, I would, I can bring you that number.
Talked about before, now we're at two. So that's it. I think that's a very important figure to understand. What we will, we'll be saying is compared to what we're paying now.
Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, to get to the level of detail where the board wants to make a decision, that would be once we go out with an RFP, we get the actual true PPA amount from whatever vendor is the best qualified vendor. Then we can be able to put together those charts to show exactly where we feel we would be from a true savings component. Is that correct?
That's correct. And um so we would update these cash flows. Um I can include the tables, but some some people don't like, there's too many numbers. But uh I would also include a table for each site that would say, based on your historical energy use, if you stay with Southern California Edison, here's how much you're gonna save. I mean, here's how much you're gonna pay accounting for current rates and uh future rate increases. So this is how much you'll pay. Now, if you go with a PPA, you're gonna pay Southern California Edison some lower amount. And you're gonna pay the PPA company some amount and you add those two together. And the difference between that scenario and if you stay with Southern California Edison is gonna show your true savings. And that also gives you the numbers that you'll need for uh budgeting.
You know, that that's all correct, but I I should be able to ask the staff right now, how much did you pay last year?
They're pulling it for you. And from what I can tell, two point one seven six million, right around there. Yeah, I mean, you were very, very close. And I think there might be like maybe internet or something in that number, but.
We got about ten thousand numbers to try to remember.
Yeah, no, you can't pull those out of the back pocket.
Not always. Depends on the time of the week to get a hold me on.
What paper is your most recently working on, right?
You didn't remember that?
I have another question. If is fifteen percent rate increase and then the next uh twenty three percent? What if that doesn't happen? Say it only goes maybe five percent next year and.
Those those two values have been approved by the California Public Utilities Commission. The fifteen percent has already happened. That happened as of January. So you know, when it stayed last year at two point one million, increase that by fifteen percent, which would put you somewhere around. Which would put you somewhere around two point four, two point five million.
Yeah.
And then the next year is already approv- is a, an approved rate increase.
Mary and I didn't believe it either, but he added the links below that slide, and we looked at both links to take you directly to this, the staff.
Oh, they're there.
The two links under there take you right to where the P or CPUC made those decisions. And talked about how they're going to do that, how many billions in revenue it's going to create for them, so those have been passed.
So, I guess that's a different subject then, but I'll bring you up later.
Okay.
Well, I definitely think I'm in favor of moving forward with the RFP. Um, I can only assume that those rates are probably going to get worse as time goes on, so. I have a sense of urgency to get this done, uh, Tim, there's no issue with us getting this completed to qualify for that NIM two point O. Twenty twenty six, right?
Well, it. You need to be reasonably aggressive to to make sure that it gets done in time, um, you know, you're hiring a contractor. You know, in the contract, you're gonna make sure that they have to have things done in time with liquidated damages and things, you know, so. There are gonna be, it's going to be um a process, and if we go down to the timing down here. You know, I have, the outside is seven, seven months, you know, that's gonna be a bit of a push to to get things done. In between four to seven months to get into a contract. And then they, that that leaves them approximately twelve and five, seventeen more months to get to do all of their work.
And it needs to be completed construction to qualify?
Yes. Yeah, so everybody's gonna want a bit of a safety factor in there, because some equipment takes, has long, have long lead times and on and on, so. Um, it's gonna be a bit of a, you need to get started.
So out out of pocket cost right now, just to make sure I got this straight, out of pocket cost right now for this problem is only gonna be. Two hundred thousand dollars to the district, right?
Right now, we're just discussing whether it's the twenty or tw- forty thousand dollar number, we're just doing the first step.
But.
But to reality, yes.
It's two hundred.
Potentially.
Unless that's so bad.
Re- remember, the other product also had, cause we were gonna be the owners and it's gonna be on our properties, and we were gonna get a product. At the end of the day, since we're not responsible for the product, we don't own it, we don't maintain it, our our level of of construction management, our level of inspection. Goes down, it's still gonna be on our facilities, we wanna make sure that there's no conflict, it doesn't take our, any of our facilities out, but all that is minimal, so.
Well, and you think about the maintenance required on solar fields here in our desert, that's an every three month cleaning and and. Especially out in the open air, so that's a big savings in and of itself, as long as we make sure the contract is written to where. It's elevated from their normal once a year cleaning process, yeah.
Yeah.
That's gonna be interesting.
I agree with President, so I think this is something we have to move on to at least see if it's something we can do.
And so from a, from a process moving forward, with this twenty to forty thousand, I think if it, I forget what. How much money we have with Kenwood, but I remember the first contract being around twenty-six, and then. We hired him to help us with the negotiation, the scene, the management of our existing solar field.
We're working through that right now, um, so roughly twenty, that's the original twenty-six, twenty-four, twenty-two, I believe. Um, and then, uh, we're gonna be increasing it up to, it's not a set cost, but an additional ten grand, as as uh General Manager Macy stated. We're working through some, they're they're the experts and they're evaluating some, some documents and some process for our current.
So a big part of that, that staff cost is actually gonna be for our contractor, that our consultant.
Yeah, and that that's what, so where I was going with this is, my signing authority is seventy-five thousand dollars, I believe. Unless it goes all the way to forty thousand, I can, all I need is consensus today. And then I can work with him and negotiate a contract and move this forward, if I do go over seventy-five thousand, I'd have to bring it back to you probably in April. But that's something that we can do at that point, but as long as I feel that I have consensus here today to move forward through the RFP. Then I'll start negotiating uh that, that amendment to their existing contract and get that started immediately.
Time is money, that's good.
And can we uh try to figure it out sooner that we could get it on March, if we were to need it?
Let's see. Uh, we're probably going to be issuing it tomorrow, and I don't know that Tim and I can get there, but we'll try, we'll try.
Uh, and just to remind you, this is a capital improvement job, so I will have to go to the board for approval of the increase in the budget for that, for that cost.
Correct, so what we can do is we can, I can still work with within the existing contract, but when we start talking about the bigger number and those types of things. It will, it's likely to up in some fashion, so, but I can move forward with this professional services agreement with our current structure.
And I know it's not that big, um, Amanda's all over, it's nineteen thousand four hundred and twelve currently. Um, and then when we add the the element for what they're gonna be doing, that's gonna take us to twenty-nine, so your statement's still accurate, if if it's on the higher end of the forty K. Those two numbers would go past your signing with the review, wink, wink.
Sorry, I, so no, so I'll I'll thank you, and we'll start working with uh Kenwood immediately. Okay, any other last questions for Tim before he leaves?
Thank you.
Tim, thank you very much, appreciate it, I'll be in touch.
A pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Item eight, General Manager comments.
Um, I just wanted to let the board know, uh, we did spend some time in uh Washington DC, my last two days I was in Sacramento. Uh, when we went through what they call the swing office, basically they're building, they moved everybody into a new office building. Both sides of the house, and then so they can redo the capital, then they're gonna move everybody else, that's what's swinging the door, if you will. Um, met with several senators and some assemblyman staff, and all of them had the same um information. The governor said it's somewhere in the mid thirties with the budget um deficit, but based on other analysts, they're. Saying it's almost gonna be seventy billion dollars, so it does not look good in Sacramento, and most of them said. You need to really focus on what you want, because we're not, it's no longer what we had three or four years ago, it was a lot more fun to go to Sacramento for both us and. The people that represent us, when there's plenty of money and there's not, we're not there today, so they all realized that, and they, over and over, that was the theme, so. Just passing that along, um, it was very nice, and I look forward to going up there, I know we're going up there at least one more time this year as part of C S D A or. Uh, C S D A and Aqua, so yeah, I think uh at that point, we'll introduce you to Roseanne, cause I know some of you haven't met her. Uh, she was a fantastic um representative of the Ca- California Groundwater Coalition. Uh, very similar to what you see in the way you walk into an office and you can automatically see she has a rapport with somebody there, and it makes the conversations go a lot more smoothly. Soonly to what we see when Laura steps in the room up in DC, so it was very good, and I appreciate the board's support in allowing me to.
Just just for clarification, this doesn't, the financial situation up in Sacramento, uh, it certainly doesn't impact grants that we have. Already been approved for, right?
No, a lot of the cutting that they're doing is their active budget, and they're actually, to get to thirty-eight million, they're actually taking from future budgets. Like education and then moving it up and borrowing a little bit, so a lot of it's creative, they're not talking about anything.
I was just trying to confirm what Marion told me.
Robin, can you hear the tape, Paul?
Yeah, so anyway, thank you again for your support and allowing us to do those activities.
Thank you. Item nine, Director's comments, Director Meyer.
Uh, just a couple, um, one, again, I I am very grateful for the opportunity to have stood in your place up in DC, I learned a lot. And I think that as electeds, it was very, very clear that the message was. Our elected Senate and Congress representatives wanna hear from us, relaying messages from the constituents, not our staff. And I think it's gonna be really important that when we meet with these people in the future, we are bringing them real stories of our community. Real um, real problems that we're facing from a standpoint of representing our people. And I just, I think that was very powerful in in not just Laura's comments, but the panel that we heard and several of the other. Um, staff members uh made it very clear that that's who they wanna hear from, and they wanna hear what's impacting their voters. They wanna know that, so that was very um educational, the other thing, and this is a little bit uh going a little bit backwards for me, but. In the developer's handbook that we all recently reviewed, um, I recently had been put into a position where I needed to look at the city's. Um, codes and regarding regarding stormwater pollution, prevention plans, which are extremely lacking in our city's code. And when we have a contractors letting a a porta potty spill out its chemicals and feces on the ground and not self-reporting. And the city is not acting on it, I feel like we may need to actually state in our developer's handbook. That they are required to follow the state guidelines, even though the city may not have anything written, I think we need to have it in writing somewhere. But these are the guidelines they are to refer to, to follow on their construction sites, that's my two cents, thank you very much.
I I agree with you, when I look at that, I also noticed the uh. International Code Council, some of their stuff wasn't mentioned in their own soldier reference that. We're building upon what's already in place for them.
We're on top of a filter, it's worse than going to the ocean, what is seeping in will affect our children and our children's children ten, twenty years from now. And they need to take it way more serious than they are.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry.
Uh, Director Martin?
Yeah, just uh, wanted to comment briefly, I said before, I appreciate all the work. Went in and putting this meeting together and what you guys did, I really appreciate it.
Guys, everyone good?
Nothing.
And nothing further for me, this meeting is adjourned, again.